Yeah, well, it might be some time. Okay, now, I have been advised that I have been ill-advised. And the advice that I got that questions should be had during debate was incorrect. And because there was a covering report, then it was open to me to have questions before the debate, which is what I would normally do. So I'm apologising for that, if I get, I got the wrong advice. And I can understand why some of you may have thought that the questions in the debate were separate. So what we're going to do, somewhere here, there's a, now that you've given me this advice, you've taken it away again. So Standing Order 23.5 is a revocation or alteration by resolution at the same meeting. So what I am proposing to do is that we revoke the last, the resolution and we do it again. I'm happy to swap, I'm happy to swap them. So I'm, I take it that I'm moving from the chair that we revoke the resolution on, the notice of motion on? Seventeen? Seconded, seconded, councillor Lord, it's a procedural motion, so I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. And we will now resume. Now, can I take it, and I don't take this for granted, can I take, don't give me any more advice, right? Can I take it that most of you have asked questions? Are there any further questions? Because we're, let's, let's keep this clean. Are there any further questions with regard to this? Right. If there are none, then we can, so can I invite the mover to re-move and then we'll go into discussion and everyone will get a chance to speak.
I will so move. And in doing so, I would remind councillors that there was an attempt by this authority to establish a unitary council in the region. And don't forget, we are talking about the Otago region, not just Dunedin and something else, at the time of the local government reorganisation reform in 1989. At that time, representatives of this council visited Clutha and Queensland Lakes and central Otago. And those authorities, with the exception of Queensland Lakes, were supportive of investigating a unitary council at the time. Queensland Lakes, in the shape of the mayor of the day, Cooper Warren, didn't because bad, evil, ugly Dunedin wouldn't, quote, wouldn't let them have an airport. He was given that assurance by the other authorities, there would be no objection to such, at the time, but nonetheless didn't change his position and therefore that, that initiative failed. So when people talk about a regional council, they need to do so, a unitary authority, they need to do so in the context of what has since transpired. I think realistically, talking about it, some idea that a regional council might be Dunedin and our friends up at the ORC and only this part of the territory is dreamland, what unitary authorities are about in much larger territories. And if anyone thinks that those other authorities would buy into a discussion of that kind, good luck with that. I think that's part of the context. The main reason for the revocation that I'm now moving for the 15th time, or at least the third, is because, like most of you here, I'm sick of the unpleasant, aggressive and boorish obsession that this has become. And I think the sooner we put that issue to sleep, the better.
Councillor Wally. Thank you, your worship. I guess the key thing that we learnt from this whole motion and process was firstly, actually, how much workload our staff are trying to undertake at the moment. And I think that was one thing that I got loud and clear from the emails. They are really doing it probably over and above than what they actually should do at times. And I can see that in some of their faces, when you see them in the corridors and you can see how tired and drained they look. So I can totally understand why this paper, draft paper, never really advanced as far along as it could have or should have. And I'm extremely disappointed on that. But at the same time, I do believe that I was quite comfortable to see it sit for a period longer, because I did think it was going to show some really good outcomes. Unfortunately, we'll never know and maybe we will move a motion sometime in the future. But at the meantime, my vote will still stay the same. Thank you.
Councillor Vennas. Revocation is a really big deal. It's recognised as being a really big deal to revoke a properly constituted council resolution in standing orders up and down the country by having quite a large number of requirements in order to make a revocation. If it was easy to revoke a council resolution, it would happen quite often, potentially, especially with a council that perhaps is a bit more divided than ours, and it would be very difficult for anything to get done. So I think that we have to accept first of all that revocation and the rules that go around it are there for a very good reason, and it's not just some kind of arbitrary, stickling kind of issue that we're dealing with. In attempting to revoke this particular report, this unitary council report, what we are in effect doing, if we revoke it, as looks likely, is we are saying, we don't want to know. The old saying, to be or not to be, is, that's the question. The question here is, do we want to know or do we not want to know? And I believe that as a council that has had and continues to have enormous issues trying to be the other half of the local government of this city, that we really need to at least look at, I'm not saying do it, but we really need to look at what a regional council, DCC, unitary council would look like. It doesn't mean that the regional council disappears, far from it. As I would understand it, if you were to combine and have one council, you would have all the people from the regional council with bus experience, for instance, would, would be in the new council. You would have some councillors from the existing regional council in the new council. This is at least one of the possibilities that could be looked at. And it would be a possibility that the problems that we currently have with the transport system, for instance, where the regional council runs the buses and we provide the bus stations and they want the hub and we have to try and design it, and these two quite separate organisations are trying to achieve the same thing, is inevitably a structure that's going to cause problems. Councillor Benson-Pope has quite rightly pointed to our dual local government as a child of the reform of 1989. It's a, the, the divisions that were created in 1989 were created because it was necessary to get amalgamation to happen, it was necessary to get people on board, and quite frankly, it was necessary to give jobs to a bunch of small councils that didn't want to know otherwise. And that's what the regional council was there for. The artificial divisions where the regional council gets our port, but we get to control the roads to it. And then they get the buses and it, it's, it's not a possible structure that can optimise value for Dunedin. And we have seen Dunedin suffer as a result. Dunedin is the only city that I know of, that's a coastal city, that has a wasteland for a foreshore. And it's not to blame the regional council or the DCC. The fact is, the regional council own most of that land. When we want to try and do something with it, their agenda and our agenda are coming from different backgrounds and different requirements, and we just can't get the thing to come together. So we're at a turning point. We're at a turning point in terms of local government. There was a great turning point in 1989, when we had that lot of reform. Potentially, we could have another, even more positive turning point in the future if we consider the unitary council and we get staff when they have time, at some time in the future, to actually finish what was started. It's not just a turning point, this revocation. It's a tipping point for this council. It's the tipping point that says, are we going to go forward and look at any new possible structures? Or are we going to say, no, we don't even want to consider what might be available in the unitary council report? Over two years ago, we all, every one of us here, thought that actually considering, just getting a report on it, might be a good idea. What has fundamentally changed since then? We've been given reasons for the delays, and I've questioned those, and I've had to accept some of the answers, I don't accept all of them. We are now in a situation where we can decide whether or not this unitary council report will, at some time in the future, when staff have time, actually inform us, or whether we simply don't want to know. Do we want to know? Or do we want to stick our heads in the sand? That's what we need to decide now.
Councillor Wilson. Thank you, your worship. I'm in that incongruous position of agreeing with councillor Vandevos while I disagree with councillor Vandevos. He has many times told us that we shouldn't put motions up without a report. And this is one, one situation where, when we made this motion, we didn't have a report on it, and I think it was ill-advised to follow it on and moved it. And I apologise for my part in actually agreeing to it. Because had I known it was going to be such a big amount of work, I wouldn't have put it on the work stream. It's an interesting piece. I had understood when we did that, that it would be a relatively easy piece of, piece of work. And I found otherwise. So I, I don't, the other part of that is, is we've got, there was a mechanism in the local government act for anyone to actually apply to do this, it doesn't have to come from our council. We might have heard a statement earlier that this has been something of great interest. I have yet to hear anyone come along to annual plan and ask us to be driving this. It isn't a high priority, as far as I've heard from our community. I have heard our community, and I heard it today from out in the streets and out and people coming to our table, as I have more and more increasingly loudly hearing about climate change. That is where we need to put our resources and our efforts. And I'm, I am in this really concerned space that we're, we're focusing on the things that won't make a difference to our community. This is one of those things that, while I can understand some frustrations, I think they've improved, but that isn't what's going to make a big difference to us as a community. We need action and we need to work together to get the climate change dealt with and have a much better understanding of what those work streams are for both councils. That's, I think those are the priorities that I'm hearing from our community. I also think it's incongruous that we're lying on, when we often hear that we have too many staff or that we need to be not employing so many staff, we're getting things added again without reports, without an understanding of the impact on the work plans, to, and then expecting those to just appear from staff. So that's why I think, that's why I'm, I'm going to approve this motion and ask that you consider the workload, especially with what's coming before us in the next three days. If this is one of those key issues that we should be dealing with, or actually there are much, much more constructive things for our staff to be working on. I also want to take exception to the manner of the emails that have come. There are so many matters of equal importance to this. There are actions under the environmental plan that we've sought and haven't yet got reports on. There are track audits, there are whole, at every department, every level, there's work that we have asked for and that has been delayed because of those work priorities. Again, if we want to keep on adding things in, and I'm sure we'll do that in the next three days, I think we have to really consider whether this is one of those ones, whether we've got the support to carry on with this sort of work, or whether the community have asked us for much greater priority.
Councillor O'Malley. Worship. There was mention of bad behaviour, and I reckon there has been a fair amount of bad behaviour going down around this. I want to talk about, just as we're going forward, a lot of mentions being made of the council ELT meeting. And I'm concerned about that particular meeting because there are no minutes taken there. And so when something comes out of it, it's a hearsay environment as to what was actually said, because you're trying to recall with no minute what was said up to a year ago or longer. In addition which, it is not a, it is not a public meeting environment. And so we have an issue there too of potentially, we might be making decisions in a situation that is non-public and to which there are no minutes being taken. So I'm concerned about what may go on there. I am surprised, as this has unfolded, that we have been told that it's due to a lack of resources. Because we are going into our annual plan and we just set the year ago forward spending and staffing for appropriate things. And apparently, we were not brought, was not brought forward to us that we did not have sufficient resources to staff our own resolutions. And that would be kind of a nice piece of information to have got at the long-term plan, because we could have made a decision as to whether or not we wanted to staff it more or not. The tool that might be most useful to us, and I hope we see it soon, is an understanding of how many resolutions are outstanding. In that way, we'll definitely know whether or not we can't ask for any more, and maybe we would sit down and actually have another formal meeting of saying, actually, let's peer these ones off because they don't relate. But at the moment, this is an unusual event we're doing here, where we are reversing a resolution almost by itself, almost out of context of really what are we prioritising here? Because we're hearing that this is a prioritisation of work, but we don't have a list as to what is being prioritised. Councillor Benson-Pope suggested that if we were to form a unitary council, it would include all of Otago. I don't think so. I mean, and I don't think it's naive or stupid or lacking of knowledge or whatever to assume that it would only encourage, it would only contain our current boundaries, because we have already an artificially large boundary. We have already incorporated in Silver Peaks and, and our own suburban areas, Mozgale. We did that amalgamation back in the past. Our territorial area completely contains our transport system. And, and that would have been brought up in this, presumably that would have been brought up in this report. And I remind you again, this was not a resolution to form a unitary council. This was a resolution to compare the advantages and disadvantages of forming a unitary council. And it would have been able to, it would have illustrated for us the challenges and the rewards for doing it. We would have been then in a position to have made an informed decision as to what we want to do. We appear to be wanting to not be informed, because the effort to get that information is too great. I hope that we come back to visit this again in the future. We pretty much know how this vote's going to go down. But I will remind everybody else as well, it's quite useful to have the videos, because you can go back and actually see what was said on the day. And I actually haven't had a chance to go back, but I remember that day quite clearly. Councillor Vandevos was complaining about our poor relationship with the unitary council, and he was implored by the mayor, why didn't you do something about it? Why don't you pass the resolution? To you, and we hear this quite often, why don't you do something about it? Why don't you pass the resolution? And now we're sitting here saying, oh, let's not bother, let's back it off. So that might be why people don't put the resolutions up. Thank you.
Councillor Steadman.
Thank you, worship. Bit of a conundrum. I've listened to councillor Vandevos, and very rational and compelling in his discussion. He is a smart man, but sometime, this is, remember, this, this resolution, why we're here, was not actually about the actual resolution itself. We've got the staff that are under pressure. They've been asked by us to do certain jobs in our city, and one of those is provincial growth fund. But this was more about stopping the behaviour. We know the reality of what that behaviour was, the stress our staff are put under and those questions and the harassment and that. So we must not forget that. This is what this is about. The resolution itself is fine. I understand where it comes from. And I hear councillor Vandevos, and as I said, it was rational and compelling now in afterthought, but I do not want to see staff getting abused in emails, etc. That's just something that really cuts my grain. I absolutely hate that sort of behaviour, and that's why I was in support of revoking this resolution. Actions have consequences, so we've got to remember the original reason why we revoked this resolution. Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Your worship, I don't disagree with the idea of exploring what a unitary authority would mean. I don't disagree with it at all. However, this is not the time. And it's not the time because we have been told, and I know it to be true, that workloads do not permit it. I have seen that go down in the department that I work most closely with, Enterprise Dunedin. Where staff there have been working on our provincial growth fund application. I've seen it with the team that would have been doing this work, just the incredible and sudden, really, workload they have had. None of us were expecting the provincial growth fund, I don't believe. We had a change of government, that was quite a surprise in a way, and then the provincial growth fund came out of that change. And a year ago or more, I don't think any of us expected the gift of the design for the waterfront. That was something that was not in our plan either. But we were able to be agile and respond, we had to be, all the stars aligned. And it was a once in a lifetime opportunity to do so. If we're going to be responsible employers, then we need to be cognisant of those workloads. In terms of the relationship with the regional council, we have been told clearly by those of our staff that this was a delicate time in terms of negotiation and partnership on a number of fronts. From that point of view, it's not appropriate. We have elections coming, and again, the timing of this is not appropriate, it muddies the waters. In terms of motions not being carried out, I just want to talk a little bit about the motion that I felt passionate about. And that was around working with the ORC around harbour matters and harbour edge assets. And I can remember really clearly, as I alluded to earlier, that the chief executive, when I asked, well, where is that up to? Was very clear, look, we just don't have the resources to progress this. And I was disappointed. But I don't believe that I followed up in the manner in which this was followed up. And it brings me to my final point. The manner in which we deal with disappointment, the manner in which we deal with things not going our way, is really important to remind ourselves of. And a little bit of kindness and respect, particularly when it comes to our staff, would go a very long way. Because I believe that each and every one of them come to work with a commitment to serve the city in a passionate and committed way. And so we need to keep that in mind and remember that when we are dealing with staff and asking questions. Thank you.
Councillor Steads.
Thank you, your worship. I think it's important to look a little bit of the history around this, to understand why, for me, to understand why I would change my mind. Why did we have the resolution in the first place? We had it because of significant frustration. If I remember rightly, I voted for it. We were frustrated about the lack of cooperation with the ORC, which was hindering the work that we were trying to get done. So, if you like, it was a shot across the bows. Those frustrations have since reduced considerably. We're seeing much more cooperation, both at the elected member level, but certainly at staff level. So if we look at our workload, we have so many things that we want to get done. We have a whole lot of climate change stuff. You know, my view is, we talk a lot about climate change, but we've done very little on the ground. So should, do we want our staff to be working on addressing climate change? And we're going to have that debate undoubtedly in the next few days, over whether we put some money into the can so that we can do some work? That will occupy staff time. So do we really think, as a council, that the reason that we originally wanted this paper is still valid, it's still a high priority? If it hadn't been raised in an aggressive way, that where is this, why hasn't we got it? It would have probably been still, still sitting in our box and live. But that, you know, we've heard about email traffic, and it was, some of it was pretty hurtful stuff. And that's not appropriate for this body. Is that really what we want, to focus our energy on, when we've got all of this other stuff that we would, we need to get done? So my appeal to councillors around this table is, think about it. If we vote not to rescind this motion, then what we are saying to staff is, this is now a priority. Push aside other work, do this. Is that what we really want? Or do we want our staff to focus on more important issues? So I'd urge you to vote to rescind it. Or, if we have to have it, that it takes very low priority, because I don't think it's important right now.
Councillor Alder.
I'm really glad that we're getting to debate this today. I think it's really important. And I think the resolution, which was passed unanimously to look at unitary council, was at heart a good one. And I still believe it is, because in fact, we share so much. It doesn't mean that we will become a unitary council, it's just looking at the pros and cons. And hopefully, what would come out of it is how we go forward with a better relationship. I do not like, though, how the, the pressure that's been put on people. I do not like how the process has been managed. And one of the reasons I asked Sandy about having resolutions is that I feel like we need a way to track where resolutions are and have a good discussion, hey, this is low priority now, you know, and then it might come up later. Because indeed, people's workloads have been huge, and the PGF has just doubled that. And so I believe tracking resolutions is a way forward and having the orange, red or green light. And being, having it on our papers, because then we can keep an eye on it. So then this kind of ignoring it and then it coming up would not happen. So, well, that's what I think anyway. But I really have not enjoyed this process at all. But I still think it's a good resolution. So I'll be voting for it.
Councillor Newell.
Thank you, worship. What a bugger's muddle this has turned into. We're not talking about our behaviour here, we're not talking necessarily about workload. To borrow from my esteemed colleague, what we're talking about is process. And I think if something is going to be removed, a resolution is going to be removed... And I think if something is going to be removed, a resolution is going to be removed, we need to go through an official channel, not a casual conversation that may or may not have happened to two or three people or even a full sit down at the E L T. If we, if we make a resolution and we vote on a resolution, being a naive first term councillor, I thought that just happened. I just thought that's what we did, that's what we were here to do when that happened. Now, I'm not, I'm not for a moment suggesting that the workload isn't an issue. I know there's a hell of a lot on and I get that, but we need to follow a process here rather than just let it drop off. If it hadn't been checked on, would it have, would it have continued? I also am slightly concerned about the amount of outstanding resolutions that we may or may not have and no one knows. Again, as a naive first term councillor, I thought our job was to pass these resolutions and then they happened. If that's not the case, when do we find out? When do we get these updates? Again, I'm not saying that the council, that the staff aren't working hard. I'm not saying that they can't get to them, but we need to know. You can't just, just leave it. We're making, we're forced to make a lot of assumptions here. We're forced to make the assumption that it's going to be a negative outcome for a relationship with the ORC, when it may not be. We might find synergies and efficiencies that work for both and more importantly, work for our ratepayers. I think we definitely do need to track our outstanding resolutions one way or the other. And as we, as, no one's being unreasonable here in that capacity, everyone appreciates the workload. So I think we just need to know where things are and if they aren't a priority, I think we need to vote again. If we vote for a resolution, we need to vote it down. And yeah, we've got there now, we're revoking it now. But my God, the ill will and ill feeling around this table over this is just embarrassing. I also think that we're forced to assume that our neighbours wouldn't be interested in this. Again, we're coming from a negative point of view here and we just don't know. I mean, there may be efficiencies and synergies there for the other councils as well and we may never know. I voted for this, I voted against this, I'm all over the show, I'm confused. I didn't like the process. I didn't like the process. It was hurried and I think sometimes expediency is used to force a result. As a naive first term councillor, I fell for that one. It won't happen again, but thank you. I'm not telling you.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clear my bias in terms of being, having been a treaty of Waitangi, te triti or Waitangi education activist person for the last four decades or three decades of my life, three and a half. And so in 2017, when we took the unanimous resolution to explore or asking the staff to come up with a report with the pros and cons, I was already initially apprehensive because I'm speaking as 2.1, you know, one of the 2.1 Pacifica elected members throughout this country, which is quite pathetic. But that goes to the heart in terms of how democracy works against Indigenous peoples and ethnic minorities. So I was already apprehensive, but I heard the core role from my colleagues, particularly those from harbour, with respect to harbour edge assets. And I took note of councillor Benson Pope's enthusiasm for this idea, this concept, given the history that it happened with amalgamation. So, but I was apprehensive because I, I was aware of the negative impact that the Auckland Unitary Council has had on Indigenous communities. If you just look at the way that Maori were treated at that table, given the fact that they hardly got access to the table in the first place and that the impact that, that a unitary council has had on the smaller cities of Auckland. So I was apprehensive, but I was prepared to see how this went within our particular area. So I am, I am, I just want to acknowledge councillor Benson Pope for his apologies in terms of this process and also councillor Wilson for her apologies. I, I think we, we can get all emotional about the, the treatment of the staff in terms of the email exchanges and all the, the way that we've treated each other around the table. I wasn't at the 30th meeting, but for me, it's, the overarching thing is our relationship with mana finua and how we actually practise as a territorial authority, our commitment to te triti or Waitangi and sustainable development or whatever you call it, that underpin our eight strategy. So for me, any debate about a report that would have come would have focused on really, is this really how we want to go? Because as far as I can see, being a very minority minority person at this table, I would say that our chances of representation in a unitary council would be close to zero. Kialda.
For the speakers. Right, well councillor O'Malley is right. I provoked this original resolution and I voted for it. And at the time, I thought it was the right thing to do. And frankly, if there hadn't been the brouhaha about it lying on the table for a while, I'd probably still be quite happy to have it there as long as it got done sometime. But that has become untenable. But actually, my reasoning for supporting revocation now is not only about staff workloads, it's about timing. Because the responsibilities of regional councils right now are in the spotlight. Huge changes are potentially afoot. The pressure on regional councils around this country to lift freshwater quality in a very short timeframe are intense. Some of them are almost flying apart, partly because of lack of capability and partly because they've just got behind the eight ball. The last thing I want right now is to be taking something on that is in a complete state of flux. The Environmental Protection Agency is just, is about to be given responsibilities the same as regional councils. And the minister has made it quite clear. He's putting the pressure on regional councils, putting some tension in the system. This is just not, it's not a matter of not, not wanting to know. It's, it's a matter of not being able to know at the moment because things are in a state of flux. Anything could be on the table with regional councils in the next wee while. The last thing I want to do is be buying into, for our staff as well as for us, an unknown quantity that's under immense pressure. So that's among the reasons why I'm supportive of revoking this at the moment. It's not to say that it can't be considered again in the future. Councillor Benson Pope, you'll write a reply. Okay, we will do this again by division. Thanks Lyn.
Councillor Benson Pope. Councillor Alder. Councillor Gary.
Aye.
Councillor Hall. Has gone, sorry. Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lefeso.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor Newell.
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley. Sorry?
Aye.
Thank you. Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Stedman.
Aye.
Councillor Vandevus.
Aye.
Councillor Wiley.
No.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
Your worship.
Aye.
Carry ten four.
Okay. Been down for the third time? Did I not have it on? Thank you. Sometimes.
Not all the time.
It's been suggested that we, there's an appropriate time to adjourn. We are coming back to a council meeting tomorrow, which is the annual plan. And we've, we've scheduled Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for that and we can take that time. So what's the feeling around the room? Do we, do we, we want to carry on now or, or councillor? Perhaps if you could just give me an indication by hands up, who would like to carry on now for a while? And one, two, three.
I've got a question.
Are you abstaining? So that was about five or six, one, sorry, put your hands up again, who want to carry on? One, two, three, four, five, six, those who'd write adjourn now. One, two, three, four, five, six. All right. My suggestion is we do, we plunge on a little, but not for very long. We just do maybe get an item out of the road and then knock off for the night.
Your worship, can I suggest maybe we bring Fulton Maath forward? And because we do have a legal representative here from the company and rather than having to bring you back the next day, we've also got National Masters Games.
Point of order. We've confirmed the agenda in the current form, that will be ultra virus. I understand the standing orders.
Now we, my understanding councillor is that that's not possible to change. So look, we'll, why don't we, why, why don't we carry on with nineteen and maybe twenty, I'll come on ahead. So nineteen is the railway station consultation, the proposed pedestrian mall. Who's, who's fronting for this? Richard, sorry.
I was just subject to questions, I'm happy to move.
Right. Richard, do you want to introduce this or do you want to just go straight to questions?
Just a couple of very minor clarifications and then happy to go to questions. This draft or proposed statement of proposal, pages eighty two and eighty three, there's a couple of minor corrections in there. Under the proposal, where it states access will be retained for pedestrians and cyclists, that will also be motorised scooters, mobility scooters and maintenance vehicles to be added in there. So apologies for that. And the last bullet point on page eighty three, where it says the amended enacted bylaw, that should read the pedestrian mall. It's just that our normal statement of proposals are around bylaws, so that was a copy and paste error.
A pedestrian mall comes into force.
Correct.
Right. Got that? Sorry?
I had understood there was an amended resolution required, but I could be wrong.
Is that around item C? So the delegation within the committee manual sits with the chair of the hearings committee, so there's no need to change, change that.
Right. Okay, questions councillors? Does anyone have any, councillor Gary?
Yes, Mr Saunders, a couple of questions. What's rat running?
Shortcutting.
Okay, thank you. And I see that there's two mobility parks that have been proposed. There are mobility parks there already. Do you think that's going to be sufficient and are you comfortable with the location from the interactions you've had with the disability groups?
Yes, we're, we're comfortable with the location, the bottom of the access ramp seemed, would suggest that that's the best location around the station. In terms of total numbers, it's something we're going to have to monitor and take feedback on, but it's the existing, the situation, it seems to be the right fit, given the number of spaces available in the area.
And will they have a time on them?
I would have to come.
Was it one eighty?
I'd have to come back to that, sorry councillor.
Maybe I saw one eighty. The other question I had was around the feedback from the art society. Now, I see that there's two in the plan, two spaces for a taga art society. But the issue that was previously raised was about members dropping off very large pieces of artwork and then, and then sometimes having to pick them up if they're not sold. And it comes only at specific times. Have you had further interactions with the art society that would suggest that the solution that you have in there in terms of those two parks will address that?
Look, we, we had further feedback from the art society and again, in terms of the location of spaces as they exist, those ones are right adjacent to the building and again, adjacent to the access ramp. So they are, we would consider them to be in an appropriate location and they, they still would have the choice of using the pick up, drop off space as well.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Vandevos.
Going back to an issue quite some number of years ago, where a figure of speech was used to call off the dogs. Is it anticipated that rat running is simply seen as a figure of speech and you're not actually describing any of our citizens as rats?
Correct.
Good, oh, thank you. Seriously though, getting on to number twenty, this is on page seventy three, talks about two mobility parks adjacent to the railway station ramp were accessible to the public. I understand from the map that the mobility parks are still going to be there, but I haven't been able to understand exactly how many parks we're going to lose as a result of this pedestrian mall. Can you give us the figure? It looks like about six, but it's hard for me to tell.
So there's, there are six coming out where, at the Toito end of, with the new coach parking ground and that's, that's where that, we are reviewing the option of using those variable parking signs, which will allow us to turn them into car, turn them back to car parks on, on days where there's not the demand for coach parking. And I understand there's also an additional one coming out to provide for a new taxi park on Lower Stewart Street.
And what about the parks that are currently either side of the main entrance of the railway station? A lot of them were used especially for Saturdays, farmers market etcetera. Apparently, I believe there's at least six parks on one side and I think maybe five on the other.
So that's, there's five, five P thirty and one taxi stand on the north side of the building entrance? Would, would, they would come out as part of this proposal?
So we would lose six parks there, if you include the taxi one, and six some of the time because of coaches on the other path.
That's correct. And yeah, and then the, and then one on Lower Stewart Street to shift, to provide that taxi park that's coming out of the railway station.
Okay, so twelve or thirteen, however you want to look at it. Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, the issue over losing the legal road. Legal roads again tend to be sort of enshrined and I understand that there is a provision to actually turn a legal road into a pedestrian mall. Is there a specific consultation that you need to go through for that? Or do you consider the trial that we've had to already be that consultation?
This, this is proposing, we go out with a statement of proposal or go through a formal consultation procedure to reach a decision. So the, the act specifies we have to do that.
And is that because of the legal road issue?
That's correct, that's the proposal to turn it into pedestrian mall requires that.
All right. So it's depending on the feedback that we get, whether or not we can actually then go through it, that we have to consult on it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Newell.
Thank you, your worship. Mr Saunders, just a kind of a tongue in cheek request, but also quite a serious one. After any major event, that aforementioned rat route is a wonderful way of stocking, stopping the traffic snarling up at the ironic intersection by the cabbury there. Is there any way that you could have sort of those magic up and downy bollards and on, you know, major occasions that you could, you could just drop them and let us through? Because it, like seriously, because like it snarls up there quite badly. Obviously, you've got 22,000 people trying to get home at once.
Appreciate, we, we do have challenges in that area of town after a major event at the stadium, but I, I guess my view on that from a safety point of view is that if pedestrians become used to using it at pedestrian mall, particularly given most events end in the dark, introducing cars back into that space for, after a single event where they then are mixing with pedestrians again is probably not a good safety outcome.
Other questions? You'll have any move? So you moved councillor Benson Pope, second councillor Gary. Speakers?
Just briefly, your worship, I'd like to congratulate Mr Saunders and his team for trialling twice a proposal of this kind. It really, It really, it's not the first time that people have said that the building is spoiled by large vehicles and indeed the parking in front of it. But it's a very good, and, and the feedback from those trials has been pretty overwhelming from what we read. But it's perhaps a very good example of the value of trialling proposals of this kind. Because it gets people used to the idea and also the advantages and possibly disadvantages. So I think this is something, because it's not a final decision, it will be a very useful thing to proceed with and get on with it.
Councillor Vandevos and then councillor Gary.
I, I feel the need to remind councillors that every park that we want to try and build in the city is going to cost us thirty-five thousand dollars. And that we are going to lose a dozen of them with this process. In terms of the view of the building, the building is at least ten times higher than any car that's going to be parked in front of it. And there is, I think, an argument to say that, okay, it's all very nice to see just the building in its entirety with no cars evident anywhere. But then it also suggests that perhaps there's not a lot going on in the place and that there is that other side of things to consider. For staff to again be proposing a change, which I can see some benefits for, but that loses us yet another dozen car parks and doesn't actually pick them up anywhere else, when I believe there are plenty of opportunities for other car parks to be maintained, is again an issue that I feel so strongly about that despite not minding particularly having a pedestrian mall, the fact that there has been no attempt to try and put those dozen car parks anywhere else, I just can't vote for it. It's more erosion of the vital car parking that we need in the centre of our city. And it's going to be so near the new hospital that again, those dozen car parks at thirty-five thousand dollars apiece in terms of value are going to be sorely lost. So unfortunately for that reason, I have to vote against.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to be voting in support of this and I'm delighted that we're going out for further consultation. I'm particularly impressed with the way that we have taken into account the needs of those with mobility issues. Because trying to get people with mobility issues to places around the city can be quite challenging, depending on where you're going and quite stressful. And also the needs of the art society. I attend many, if not all of their exhibition openings and it's very well patronised and some of the exhibitions have people from all over New Zealand submitting work. And some of them are very large pieces of work. So that's a really positive, that's positive news as well. I noted in the report, there was concern from tenants of the railway station around the loss of patronage. But that's often the first response people have to the idea that cars will be taken away. And in fact, the opposite is true from, from what we know, the research we know from, from other places that have done this. As a tour guide for a number of years, I can say categorically that visitors really enjoy when they come to our city for a very short amount of time, sometimes a matter of hours. They really appreciate being able to take a photo of such a significant building without the presence of tour buses. They sometimes don't have the time to wait till the buses move. And I seem to recall, and I'm looking over at Mr Christie, that the railway station is the most photographed building in the southern hemisphere, I was right, southern hemisphere. So that perception is, and that situation is actually really important. And we often use it in our documents and so forth. So from that, all those perspectives, providing the needs of the tenants have been taken care of and they have. And the needs for those with mobility issues have been taken into consideration. Let's go out and consult and see what people think about this as it stands. So I thank the staff for their considerable work and research on this.
Councillor O'Malley.
Just gonna say, losing car parks, you've got a railway station, don't think, don't forget about suburban trains.
Further speakers. Councillor Elda.
Just noting that indeed we are taking car parks out and I, I do agree with this. I think taking photos of buses in front of the most beautiful railway station in the world is rather horrific. But noting that the number of tourists coming to Nidin isn't decreasing and the form of transport they're preferring, and this is growing, is cars. I do think we do need to be aware of the landing place for tourists in Dunedin so that they can access all our beautiful amenities and facilities. So it's just an awareness thing. And I just want to put it out there that, that needs to be looked at in, in some way, shape or form.
One more speakers. You will write a reply, councillor Benson Pope? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Thank you, that's carried. Thank you, Richard. We'll do one more. DCC submission on childcare allowance policy for elected members of local government. Sandy. Do you wish to introduce this briefly?
There are a couple of changes I would like to alert councillors to from the paper circulated with the agenda. On the financial considerations, in the summary of considerations, there's a figure there that is incorrect. Page eighty-eight. There's a figure of a thousand and twenty-four. That figure should be the figure that is the maximum available under the policy. As drafted, the, the policy has six thousand dollars. The other point I would like to draw councillors' attention to in paragraph five of the draft submission, where it's been suggested based on feedback that the rate that we, the submission says that the rate rather than be fifteen dollars an hour as proposed by the authority should be increased to the living wage amount of twenty-one fifteen. Our advice would be if that is to be the council's submission, then we should increase the overall amount as proposed by the authority to cover the same number of hours as fifteen dollars. So that would mean that instead of being six thousand dollars, which is the cap, it would be eight thousand five hundred. So that would just be a consequential change and that would need to be included. Were councillors to support that rate?
Questions, councillor Hawkins. All right.
Turn around, a resolution accordingly.
Okay. That's, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to the, to the debate, but are there any questions? Councillor Gary.
Graham, I, I did have a point of clarification. And in reading the remuneration authority's papers on this, report on this, it talks about bona fide, I didn't use those words, organisations, and I understand why, you know, you would need to be using that in order to have this paid. But my question is, how does that work? And that my understanding, and there might be others around the table who have a more recent update on this. But in my experience, when you book your child in for childcare, you have to commit to a certain number of hours on, on a regular day, regular time, which makes it very, very difficult in terms of a regular hours that, that an elected member would have. And so I just wondered if there was any consideration given to that or cheek with.
Sorry, just a clarification, are you talking about more like babysitters and like outside of your, your regular childcare kind of provider?
No, I'm talking about if you want to book, my understanding, and I might be wrong, in the remuneration authority's report was that you would have to use bona fide childcare situations, organisations, including home-based care. My understanding, and as I say, I may be entirely wrong because it's a little old, this information. My daughter's twenty-one. You had to book your child in for a certain number of hours on a certain day. And you had to commit to that in order to get a place in a childcare or in a, in home-based care. If you just got a babysitter, sure, but I didn't think that that was a possible alternative.
As I understand the wording of what's being proposed by the authority, that would be covered?
Further questions? So it's been moved, councillor Hawkins, second councillor Elda. Councillor Hawkins, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Bishop. And I, I appreciate that there's an element of turkeys voting for Christmas about this in terms of supporting a system that is more encouraging of a wider range of candidates standing for election. But personally, I would rather stand and lose than stand and win an election. We're more capable people to feel that they weren't supported by a system to be able to stand for office in the first place. I won't bore people with summarising the submission, but the main points that are being made through that really are that the proposal was a very good start and that this is something that the remuneration authority has been asked to consider off and on for as long as, as long as I can remember. The, the specific proposal around not being able to reimburse people who live at the same address as you, my feeling is that it's designed to stop you paying your own family. But it does, it does then weirdly preclude you from being able to pay your own peer who obviously lives on site. And for people with irregular work hours is a fairly common, a fairly common option. I support the amendments around being able to pay people the living wage and the proportional response and what that overall envelope might be. But most, most importantly, I think, it needs to be set out such that councils don't have a choice whether or not they reimburse people for these expenses like they do with mileage or any other kind of expense, that it is something that is given, that is made available to people as of right. And while I would like to think that the remuneration authority will accept our submission, which is aligned with the local government, New Zealand submission and others, we can't guarantee that. And so B is, is a commitment from this authority that should the remuneration authority decision remain per the proposal such that local territorial authorities have to choose for themselves whether or not they offer reimbursement for childcare costs, that this authority will choose to do that. Because I think it's an important signal for us to send at this point in the cycle when people are considering whether or not standing for public office is a choice that they and their family want to make, rather than a decision we make after the election, when obviously it's far too late to influence the, the range of candidates that might choose to make themselves available. C is in reference to something that the remuneration authority and their proposal essentially put in the too hard basket around, the, the paper talks about children and then also dependents who are not children. And, and while it's, I think separating those two things isn't unhelpful for them, I would hate for that work that they have by their own admission not resolved stops. And, and, and so it would be good in our submission, which would be the natural place to give effect to C, I suppose, encourage them to continue that work such that support can be made available for an increasing number of people for whom access to support in this way is a barrier to standing, to represent their community, whether that's here or anywhere else around the country. I'd just like to thank specifically my colleague Julian McLean, who's a district councillor in Hurunui, who's done a, a lot of work in pushing for this and, and lobbying and agitating around this in the young elected members network within LGNZ, who similarly have done a lot of work to get us to this point. The remuneration authority were fairly strident in their lack of enthusiasm for considering this as a legitimate reimbursement. And so I think we've, we've got a long way to the, the paper that is in front of us. We're just asking to nudge them a little bit further and I commend them for their work. Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
I recall around the time, just around the time of the beginning of this trainium, there was a woman, I was doing some training of community boards for what's now Quip. And I recall a woman there who was lobbying around this issue because she was finding it particularly difficult to contemplate her work as an elected member and managing her childcare matters. Over the time that I've been an elected member and particularly during my time as a community board member, I would come across good people, people who wanted to put themselves forward for election, people who had something to contribute to the community, but for whom this was an issue. And who would say, my children are really young and this isn't a possibility. I would also hear from people around my board table, those who didn't claim for mileage. And I would say to them, even if you don't need to, you need to claim because if you don't, then the next person coming along may not be in the same position as you are. And you make it difficult for them. And I would hate to think that there were people not standing in this next election for office throughout the country. In fact, in two thousand and nineteen, because they didn't have the support in terms of childcare. So I support this and of course, paying a living wage is very important. I am concerned about that issue of the irregular hours because I do believe that is a bit of a problem in terms of securing childcare. But I just wanted briefly touch on C and I'm very pleased to see that clause there encouraging the remuneration authority to continue the work in supporting elected members with dependents who are not children. For those members of our community, and there are many of them, who care for dependents at home through many different situations, participating in local government would be an impossibility without support. And so I'm very pleased to see that there. I see it's, I know it's a very complex matter, but I'm pleased to see that we're asking for the work to continue. Just because it's hard shouldn't mean it doesn't continue. So I'm delighted to see this before us, it's not before time.
Councillor Vandevos.
We are all employed here as elected representatives, as self-employed people. We do our own tax. We don't have superannuation. We can make various claims on various expenses, but actually very little, especially if you live in the city. Marvelous if you live miles away. And the idea that we should now kind of think of ourselves somehow as not self-employed but as normal wage earners is going to cause serious issues, I think. Childcare allowance, I've paid more childcare costs, I think, than anyone in this room over the years. And I know how hard it is. In fact, it just about wiped me out when I had four kids and had a business trying, trying to get, get going. So I'm definitely sympathetic to the issue of having a whole bunch of kids especially and trying to put bread in their mouths. At one point, my family went vegetarian for almost two years, simply because we couldn't afford to do anything else. Please, there was no chance of me becoming an elected representative during that time. Anyway, here I am. The issue with childcare opens essentially potential for floodgates. We've got, if we're going to get away from our inland revenue status as being self-employed, the next thing on the list after childcare is going to be superannuation. And I know that, you know, MPs have a marvellous superannuation scheme already. We don't and I don't think, quite frankly, the population can afford it. And I don't think we should get it either. I also have a worry about the staff time that gets prioritised by the short notice that central government gives us to make these submissions. We get dropped in it just about every other month now with yet another submission that unless we get the staff to read this, and in some cases the hundred page documents, I'm thinking of that one on patents that came through a little while ago. And staff have got to go through all of that and then come up with a relevant submission. And then it's all got to happen in this very compressed timeframe. I think that this is a new submission industry which doesn't really do anybody any good. And what really concerns me is that, I think it was councillor Hawkins suggested that all that ever happens with these submissions is that we end up giving central government a slight nudge anyway. Nudges which they seem extraordinarily resistant to. So I'm sympathetic to the need for childcare. But I don't think that it's going to be. So I'm sympathetic to the need for childcare, but I don't think that it's going to be in our interests to vote for something that we want to essentially increase our pay if we have children. The self-employed would quite rightly then, and most of these small businesses in the country are people that are self-employed, they can't go and ask to get childcare allowances for self-employed. We're self-employed as well. What's so special about us that we should get childcare allowances when all the other self-employed in the country don't? So for all of those reasons, sympathetic though I am to people that can't afford to actually be an elected representative, I can't vote for this.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. I will be supporting all of these remits and I am grateful for the work that councillor Hawkins done in adding C. I look around my table and I value the contribution of everyone who can speak and have a voice, but that comes from experience. And I have to my left someone who's got experience with dependency and it's changes as we go. I've got equally, I want her to have a voice and be able to be here to express that voice around the table and same to my right, they've got children under definitions now, but they'll also, and I appreciate that Lee sometimes has to, councillor Vandervass has to go away for his children. I want him to be able to be around the table doing his job and being able to do that in a way that allows the people who vote for him to be, to have their voice heard and that's part of the democracy. So I'm going to turn this round on councillor Vandervass and see that this is about providing a voice from those broader communities that often can't be heard unless we ensure that they can be sitting at the table all of the time being able to do their job. So that's why I'm going to be supporting it.
Councillor Lafisa.
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to acknowledge LGNZ for sending out this elected members profile. And I'm looking at figure six and the proportion of members aged between 18 and 40 years is 6% in 2016. And I think if we want to encourage, as other, as my colleagues have spoken about encouraging immensely capable women and men as parents, as young parents, as younger people than us, then I think we need to think about the future.
Well, I'd like to back up councillor Lafisa's remarks. The statistic that I was going to use, that only 6% of elected members at local government are under 40, that is just not enough. And any mechanism that can enable more people who are younger to contribute in local government is to me a good thing. I also have a completely the opposite view to councillor Vandervass on where we should be heading in terms of professionalising our status. I think that the fact that we can't get involved in Kiwi Save It, we can't have superann, we can't have holiday pay, et cetera, actually detracts from what is not a highly paid job that can suck up 10, 15 years of your life that you're contributing. And so I actually think that we should be moving towards being employed rather than self-employed and with the disadvantages that go with that as well as the advantages. But I think that ultimately it's about enabling a diverse range of people to be able to stand and contribute if they're elected to local government. That's really what it's all about. And it doesn't matter whether there'll be different factors affecting older people and younger people, but where we're short is younger people. The vast majority, our biggest cohort in local government are male, pale and stale. And if we're going to change that, we have to enable the alternatives, the diversity that we need in our local government. Councillor Hawkins, do you want to write a reply?
What a segue. Thank you. I wasn't going to dwell on...
It was big personal.
I'm getting there on all fronts, don't worry. Yeah, I wasn't going to dwell on demographics, but I think if we want our elected bodies to be more reflective of the communities that they represent, then it's up to us to identify barriers to that happening and try and reduce those barriers. And I acknowledge that this isn't going to fix it for everyone. I also acknowledge that it's not easy for people who are self-employed to make themselves available and flexible for meeting schedules either. And, you know, if they were to organise and unionise, who knows what they might achieve? But all this is, all this is doing is opening it up for more people. And it's, I mean, it's less of an issue, I acknowledge, in the metropolitan councils because, you know, we are reasonably well remunerated for the work that we do. This is more felt in smaller districts where people are getting paid $20,000 a year if they're lucky. They're not doing proportionately less work than we are for that remuneration. It's just that the population base is how that is figured out. And as a result of them being in smaller authorities, their meetings tend to be in the evenings outside the hours that traditional early childhood facilities are open, which makes childcare more expensive. And that is where the loudest support and the most urgent support for this has come from. In places like Huronui and Waimatè, where, you know, who also deserve to be able to serve and represent their communities, but it is too hard for them to do so. So this is much about supporting our colleagues around the country as it is around encouraging people to stand for election here in Dunedin, although hopefully it can achieve both of those things. So I thank those around the table who have supported this and I look forward to the Remuneration Authority's considered consideration of it. Thank you.
I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Division, please.
Division.
Councillor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Elder. Councillor Gary.
Aye.
Councillor Haw, sorry. Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lafisa.
Aye.
Councillor Newell.
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Stedman.
Aye.
Councillor Vandervass.
Aye.
Councillor Wiley.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
Your worship.
Yes.
Carry 12-1.
Thank you, councillors. We'll adjourn now for the evening and we'll return. What time were we due to start in the morning? Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, yes.
Right, well, we'll continue this meeting then before we convene.